Good evening and welcome to the January 25th, 2023 Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting. My name is Lindsay Heffernan. I'd like to begin as we always do by thanking Mark Sarah and all the members of the Shrewsbury Media Connection for both recording and live broadcasting this meeting. It will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting and is also available on the SMC YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, nobody has expressed interest in addressing the committee, however, if in the future anyone wishes to participate in this portion of our meeting, they should contact the chairperson prior to beginning the meeting. And once recognized, speakers may have up to three minutes to present their material. Of course, the committee will also review and consider any written comments which may be presented to us before or after meetings. Next on the agenda is chairperson or members' reports. Are there any reports from one of my colleagues? Yes, Dr. Palich.
I do have one item. This past Sunday, the Massachusetts Beijing Chinese Language School hosted its Lunar New Year celebration, which was the first time that they were able to host the event in person since 2019. It was a wonderful event, as it always had been when they had been able to put it on in person in the past. Very proud that Shrewsbury High School was able to play host. I know Dr. Sawyer was in attendance as well. Several hundred area residents were in attendance, and there were performances that included students from a number of grade levels in Shrewsbury Public Schools. So just thank you to the Massachusetts Beijing Chinese Language School for putting on that celebration. It was a wonderful addition to the cultural offerings we have in Shrewsbury.
Thank you. Anything further? I have nothing myself, so I will turn it over to our next agenda item, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Palich mentioning that wonderful celebration, and our Mandarin classes from both Oak Middle School and Shrewsbury High School made some terrific presentations. Our friends from St. John's High School, their Mandarin classes also as well, and then classes from the Mass Beijing Chinese Language School. It was just a joyful occasion, and we certainly wish everyone who celebrates the Lunar New Year a happy and fortunate year of the rabbit ahead. But it was a terrific event, and really pleased to be able to be there. I also wanted to, what's obviously top of most people's minds today is the weather. I'm wearing my uniform of a sweater when we typically have weather coming in. The weather hasn't come in quite yet, the way they predicted. We're fortunate that we were able to get a full day of school in. I appreciate the ongoing constant communication with our highway department, Nick Repetta there, leading that and knowing what the options are and pre-cheating roads and the rest of it. And we're pleased to get a full day of school in today. If we had a better crystal ball, we would have been able to have after-school activities. And I know that it's a burden for families when they have to change their childcare and try to do, give as much notice as we can based on what we know at the time. But we'll see what kind of winter we have ahead, but I appreciate everyone's flexibility and understanding. Obviously, student safety and staff safety is what comes first and foremost. Beyond that, it's trying to maintain our educational program and kids being in school, you know how valuable that is, and then, of course, the impact on families when childcare is affected by changes at the school schedule. I also want to congratulate Mr. Ian Butterfield. Mr. Butterfield is a member of our physical education faculty at Shrewsbury High School. He is also a longtime coach in our track and field program, and he was just awarded the 2021-2022 Massachusetts Interscholastic Association Athletic Association Coach of the Year for the entire state of Massachusetts. It is well-deserved. Coach Butterfield has really developed a terrific program there, and not only developing excellent track and field athletes, but helping them develop into terrific young people as well. So congratulations to Coach Butterfield on that honor. And then finally, I have been in a long period of denial. I did put this in my last superintendent's update, but we do have a retirement. My longtime colleague, Mr. Patrick Collins, who's here this evening to do a presentation later, has decided to retire from his position as Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations as of the end of June. We have launched the search for his successor. We already have posted that position. We are partnering with the New England School Development Council, and I'm very pleased that former superintendent of schools in Shrewsbury, Dr. Anthony Bent, is the consultant working for NESDEC, who is coordinating the search and leading that search. He met with a variety of stakeholders, including members of our municipal leadership team, with whom Mr. Collins works closely, of course, on issues with finance and operations. His direct reports, various folks who work out in the schools, our principals, and as well as our central office leadership team, just to develop a real good understanding of what the role is now, and it is a very complex role. But we believe that Shrewsbury Public Schools are a wonderful place to work, and we're hoping that we will be able to have, develop a strong pool of applicants for this really important leadership position. The information's on our website if you're interested in the role. While certainly we're looking for those with good experience in finance and operations, certainly if it's in the public school sphere, that's a plus, but it's not limited to that. And so if you're watching, you know, if you have asked that you talk to your network and try to, we're trying to get as many people aware of this position as possible. And then one more piece that Ms. Heffernan's reminding me of here, an email went out to families today about opportunities to have, be part of focus group conversations with our partner Focus Schools, who's assisting us with developing our next strategic plan. So look for that email, and we're looking for the voices of a variety of our stakeholders to give input in terms of helping us develop a really strong vision for the next five years for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Our first time scheduled appointment is on the proposed changes to the 2023-2024 school start and end times. This is scheduled for a potential vote this evening. As background for those tuning in, and less so for my colleagues, because this has been on our agenda for many months now, at our January 18th meeting of the school committee, the Sleep Health Advisory Committee did present its consensus recommendation to change the start and end times of the school day at each level for next year. Certainly, we can find their memorandum and recommending what has now been called the Modified Option A. And I know Dr. Sawyer does concur with that recommendation, but he's here to share his perspectives with us this evening. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. So again, there are proposed changes to our school day start and end times for next year. Recommendation was made to your last meeting, and my responsibility is, before you take a vote, to give my perspective as superintendent. Just to zoom out a little bit, the reason that we're addressing this is that five-plus years ago, when our strategic plan was developed in 2018, one of our four strategic priorities that was put forward was the enhanced well-being of all. And under that, a strategic goal that as a school district, we were going to investigate, recommend, and plan for potential changes to school start times to better align with adolescent health needs for adequate sleep. And for a variety of reasons, including the pandemic, we did not get to that until the fifth year of our strategic plan, and a great deal amount of work has been done in a short amount of time in order to move this forward. We did develop what we call the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. This advisory committee consisted of about 27 or 28 folks, students from Shrewsbury High School, faculty from across different levels of the school district, and a large number of parents, many of whom have expertise in the areas of healthcare, the medical fields, and biology. And then the two liaisons from the school committee, Ms. Heffernan and Ms. Boucher, as well as certainly district leaders, including Dr. Lazard, who's here this evening, and Mr. Collins, Mr. Bzidlow as a principal as well, Dr. Mokahi, rather, from Patton School, and both of our middle school principals, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Birak. The committee did an outstanding job and worked to develop this process. The work they completed, they studied research on sleep health and start times, they reviewed guidelines from expert medical societies, investigated a host of childcare options around the central Massachusetts area, looked at what other districts have done, considered doing, asked questions as to how things went if they made changes, and that was very informative. And then sought and reviewed feedback from stakeholders on multiple occasions. And I put in bold on this slide and then used this feedback both to develop options and then to modify the option as a result of what they heard from their constituencies. And they ultimately carefully considered a variety of issues in order to come to consensus, including a lot of logistics, which, of course, is a major part of our school operations in terms of what the schedule is, and made a recommendation. I just want to pause and say thank you to all the members of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. I think I mentioned this a couple of times, but in my entire career, I think this was probably the highest functioning task force in terms of just time, commitment, expertise, dedication to the work, thoughtfulness and wisdom. And I think they are in community, regardless of what your perspective is on the recommendation, should be very proud of the work that this team of individuals did to consider this work and bring forward a recommendation. This is the recommended option that the Sleep Health Advisory Committee made, the so-called Modified Option A. It would move our high school start time 20 minutes later in the morning and later in the afternoon to a 7:55 to 2:20 p.m. schedule. For middle schools, it would move it 35 minutes later in the morning and 25 minutes later in the afternoon to 8:35 to 3:00. And then elementary schools, it would shift 15 minutes, both in the morning and afternoon, to 9:15 to 3:30. The text that's in purple is because originally that was proposed to be 3:40 instead of 3:30, but that was modified, again, based on feedback from the community, including especially elementary staff and families. Some of the features of this recommended schedule, it shifts all of our school's start times later with the purpose, of course, of providing more opportunity for sleep for students. It maintains the current order of our school tiers. It equalizes each morning bus tier by, at 40 minutes, which is a critical fix that we need to make in order to make this work and make our operations work better and also provide more sleep opportunity. It does shorten the middle school day by 10 minutes. It had grown by 10 minutes over time, and this will equalize it with the high school day. And then again, modifying the end time from the original proposal based on that feedback at the elementary level. Some of the benefits that were put forward by the Sleep Health Advisory Committee with which I concur, that it does lengthen the morning sleep opportunity for our high school students by a range of 20 to an average of 35 minutes. The 20 minutes is just the amount of time that the high school day is lengthened on the schedule. But it's really very important to note that by fixing the amount of time between tiers and lengthening the amount of time between the high school day start and the middle school day start, it allows us to start running buses at a later time in the morning. Right now, we have a paper schedule that says school starts at 7:35 at the high school. But the reality is, if you take a bus, you're getting to school somewhere in order around 7:00 in the morning to 7:05, 7:10, much earlier than is necessary for a 7:35 start time. So we're actually cutting more deeply into a really important sleep time for students because of the busing situation as it currently exists. So not only will the start time be delayed by 20 minutes, but on average, some more, some a little less, depending on where their bus stop is and how long their bus route is, students will be picked up in a much more reasonable time closer to the actual start of the school day. So really, you should be looking at this for a very, very significant number of high school students who take the bus in the morning, that it's more than a half hour of additional sleep opportunity. You know, the question has been asked, well, is that really worth making changes to the schedule? And, you know, it's very clear from the research work done that, you know, medical groups and experts in sleep health recommend 8:30 as the initial starting time for both high schools and middle schools. That would be optimal, for sure, to be 8:30 or later. But at the same time, you know, the Sleep Health Advisory Research Task Group indicated that research has shown that even some modest delays, you know, more than 10 minutes, are associated with increased sleep duration. So we're looking to increase the amount of sleep our students get and try to get them, more of them, into the zone that's recommended by sleep health experts. And again, it's, you know, at least 20 more minutes for sleep for those high school students and 30 minutes plus for those who take the bus. This is a slide that was presented by the Research Task Force or Task Group back in November. I just wanted to highlight some elements of it. This is a very large study that was done across multiple states for high school students, very large sample size. They talked about how more students slept, you know, later, the later you pushed the high school start time. The proposed schedule starts us at 7:55. Would have loved to have got that to 8:00 or more even rounded up. That just wasn't on the cards because of our logistics piece. But looking at what the percentages are, when you look at these 8:00 start times through an 8:35 start time, which was what Option B had for the high school, in those studies, you're looking at the number of students who are getting at least eight hours of sleep a night, went from, you know, the mid-40% range to almost 50% for those schools starting at 8:00 and 8:05, the low 40 percentage, and then moving to 8:20 or 8:35, which was the Option B proposal, up into the high 50% and 60%. Certainly better if we were at 8:30 for high school students, but given that, as you can see in the red text below that I added, you know, our last time we asked our high school students how many were getting at least eight hours of sleep, it was 15% of them reported that. If we're able to make a change from 15% to somewhere in the mid-40s to 50%, that's a significant change. That's the hope. Obviously, the proof will be in the pudding to see what we can do, and I'll talk more about that at the end of the presentation, but I just thought that was important to note. Other considerations for high school, the 20-minute later end of the school day is really not expected to have a significant impact on opportunities for either getting extra help from teachers after school, participating in clubs and co-curricular activities and athletics and the arts and so forth, students who have jobs, which for many students and families is a very important aspect of what they need to do. And so a 20-minute shift is not considered to have the level of impact that certainly it would have been to go an hour later under the second option that was presented. I just think it bears noting, of course, and this was some of the feedback we received from the high school students who were part of the advisory committee, as well as high school students who filled out the surveys, is there was a significant level of concern about being able to participate in sometimes multiple things, like a club and a sport, or be having, you know, missing the opportunity for extra help because they might need to leave for, whether it's a practice or a game, or a club commitment, whatever it might be. Whereas a lot of our students are doing multiple things as a result of the current situation. And participating in these pieces and being connected in their school community in that way is a very important protective factor as well for students' well-being, and I think that bears important consideration. In terms of other benefits at the middle school level, it does have an effect of providing 35 more minutes of sleep opportunity for middle school students. I don't think we probably have emphasized enough how many of our middle school students have a similar biological need for more sleep, particularly those at Oak Middle School. Our statistics as of now, and of course, we'll be turning 13 as the year goes on, but as of January of the school year, a majority of our Oak Middle School students are teenagers. They're 13 years old and 14 years old, most of them, mostly 13, and a large number of 14-year-olds as well. And then, of course, we have many students, both at Oak and at Sherwood, who are younger than 13 chronologically, but who have experienced puberty and do have a greater level of sleep need. Again, experts recommend an 8:30 or later time for both middle and high school, and this option does move our middle school schedule to align with that recommendation. It achieves that for our middle school students, and that's something I think that's important to note. There are definitely logistical benefits as well. You know, it preserves our current order of start time schedule, while it does fix this inadequate amount of time currently we have between busing tiers, particularly in the morning between middle and high school and the middle school runs. It also puts us in a situation where we're able to shave that 10 minutes off the back end of the elementary day in response to that feedback by being able to have a very efficient dismissal at the high school for our buses, when they're the first tier to be dismissed in the afternoon. That helps us move those buses quickly into their routes and makes that, you know, we might have to expand it by even more than that, 30 minutes or even 40 minutes, if we started with the middle school. That's just a logistical reality we have to deal with based on our own district's needs. And then, you know, what's came up as important in the feedback, and certainly other districts had talked about this, as a point relative to some childcare needs families have, where they do have an older student take care of a younger student, and having them get home before younger students maintains that ability. Financial benefits are pretty clear and simple in that it does not require any additional funding. In order to, you know, change some things and not have three tiers of buses or be able to have, you know, less efficient routes, more of them, to be able to condense that time between tiers, you would need significant funding, and we're talking into the hundreds of thousands to the millions of dollars, depending the extent you wanted to do that. And that's just not a reality for us financially. Certainly, the question that's come up in a variety of feedback is why not move the elementary schools to the earliest schedule? That's something that some school districts have done, other places here in Massachusetts and elsewhere. And, you know, the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, I think, thoughtfully considered that option. They ultimately did not bring forward that as an option because they felt that, first off, feedback they received in the initial query through the thought exchange, where there was sentiment from a variety of folks expressing concerns about that. They know from other districts who either tried to change their start times and ran into a lot of interference and ultimately even didn't do it because there was so much pushback, elementary families not wanting to be first and not wanting to be that early or get out that early, frankly, in terms of childcare needs. You know, obviously, that would change things for a lot of families if students were getting out of school, you know, in the 2:20 to 3:00 o'clock time, or especially the earliest time, it'd be like the 2:00 to 2:20 kind of timeframe. It did have the most saving impact on those family staff schedules and childcare needs as a result. And then I just think it's important to note that, looking at the comparison to other school districts, if in Shrewsbury, given our needs for time between the tiers, if elementary went first, whether middle or high school went second or third, whoever was in that third tier would be essentially later than virtually every other district in the state. And I have some visuals to show you with regard to that. So this is some work we did after the Sleep Health Advisory Committee concluded their work, and it took some data they had collected. It took some, we had some feedback from a parent during the public participation at our recent meeting, who had provided a document with a variety of other districts in terms of their elementary, middle, and high school start and end times. All of those districts are included in this, in this display, as well as what these bars represent are all of our Aspen Valley collaborative peers here in central Massachusetts. It includes all of our so-called DART districts that the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says Shrewsbury compares with in terms of our demographics and size, and those are districts, they're typically in central and eastern Massachusetts, but they're all included in this display as well. Some other communities that are similar in size and demographics, like Westford, Franklin, Chelmsford, are embedded in here. And I also purposely added a variety of communities, kind of going down the Route 9 corridor, from here east all the way to Brookline, because there are a number of those communities closer to Boston who have moved their high school start times closer to 8:30. So Wayland, Lincoln Sudbury, Dover Sherborne, Brookline, Wellesley, and some of whom have moved and some of them haven't, some are still on the earlier side like we have been in our high school. But I wanted to be sure that we included some districts that had made changes and had swapped different levels as a result of their work. So what you can see in this display is that from earliest to latest start times for our high schools, you can see the orange line is our current Shrewsbury High School start time of 7:35. The green bar is the median among these different districts. The purple is the average, and the gold bar is the proposed start time of 7:55. So you can see where that falls, pretty much just above the midpoint of the districts that are included in this, in this graph. In terms of end times, same colors. You can see the movement from where we end at 2, which is definitely on the earlier side for high schools, right to the, just next to the median in terms of when we'd be finishing. The one outlier all the way to the right is Newton, getting out at 3:45. They have by far the latest start time, which is 9:00 a.m. for high schools, and end time, which is 3:45, but that is definitely an outlier compared to other districts, even those that push their start times later. In terms of middle schools, the pink bar in the middle is both our current start time, it's also the median, and it's also the average. Pretty typical for middle schools among these comparison groups to start at 8:00. And we would move to really, you know, in the top five middle schools in terms of start time, very few middle schools in Massachusetts, among at least central and eastern Mass that we're looking at here, are starting at the 8:30 recommended time in terms of, you know, sleep health. So again, another benefit of Option A. Not surprisingly, the end time for middle schools would also be pushed out to be on the later side compared to most middle schools. Not the latest, but certainly three is later than when most middle schools are getting out. And then elementary schools, here's where we definitely are on the later side in terms of, you can see the average and the median are, you know, somewhere on the, you know, 8:45, a little past 8:30, closer to 8:45, our current start time. A lot of districts that do start at 9:00, fewer that start at 9:15 or 9:30. You can see that would be one of only three there in terms of that. And as far as end times, you can see that, again, would be among a smaller cluster who end at 3:30. And in terms of, you know, only one school in that survey gets out later than that at 3:45. So on the later side, and certainly a movement, but again, that's, it's a movement of 15 minutes compared to where our current situation is. One other thing, just for clarity as well, is that, you know, whereas we, some of our more closer surrounding districts, we took sort of every one of their elementary schools and put them in this. For districts that were larger, like, say, Framingham or some of the districts that have multiple, we took the earliest and the latest, so as not to make it a little simpler as far as, as far as that look. So what are some of the challenges and drawbacks of this recommended schedule? You know, certainly the area physically of Shrewsbury, of the town, and where our different schools are located, it requires a significant amount of time between each busing tier. That's not a reality for some of our peer communities. Some of our communities can get kids delivered to one school and pick other kids up and get them to the next tier of school, whatever that happens to be, with a shorter interval, which makes them able to condense times. I know the question was, why can't we just move elementary a little bit earlier and move high school a little bit later? It has to do with the physics of how fast we can get kids delivered when we pick them up by bus. So that's a reality that we have to cope with. So it's either you don't need as much time because of the geography, or you're putting more bus assets on the road at a greater cost. So those are the other pieces that other districts are doing. Certainly, that last tier is starting and ending later than most is a challenge, I think. We do think it is a viable option because other schools do it. We had done it for a long period of time with Beal with that exact same schedule of 9:15 to 3:30, and, you know, does represent the smallest adjustment of any level would have to make. But certainly recognize that it's a challenge, and that's been something we've heard from elementary staff and families. I do hope that the adjustment from 3:40 to 3:30 ameliorates that to a degree in terms of what makes, how it makes it workable for folks. Some Sherwood families are going to feel that they need some childcare in the morning, moving that start time from 8:00 to 8:35. Some of that may be something they do on their own to their neighborhood or some other piece, but there have been some emails that have come to the school committee and to me asking about the addition of morning extended school care at Sherwood. That is something we're certainly open to, and that's something, if the school committee does approve this schedule, we will, in short time, be polling parents to see if they would be interested and want to commit to that. And if it's a viable number of families who are interested, that is something we certainly could add at Sherwood Middle School. So that's something we'll give consideration to. We would just need to have enough to make it financially viable. I do not want to, you know, make my recommendation without recognizing that we do have staff and families who will be impacted. Our staff who work in the extended school care program, there'll be some time shifting, you know, 15 minutes less work in the afternoons at the elementary school, but if you're working in the morning, it'd be 15 minutes more. But there's going to be some differences there. Certainly, some of our staff, particularly our paraprofessional staff, have, many have jobs after their school day job, and this could impact their ability to get to those or maybe work as many hours in their second job, and that's something that is a reality when we shift schedules later. And then certainly, family and staff schedules, whether that's for getting their students and their own children to after-school activities, whether that's childcare, which, again, I think the task force did a great job looking at, you know, there is an impact, and that goes without saying that when you're, just as your schedule changes, when you go from having an elementary student to having a middle school student and the times change in middle to the high school, there are things- times change in, in middle to the high school, there, there are things that are going to have to, adjustments people are going to have to make. And those adjustments, depending on people's individual situation, may be more difficult for some than for others. I just want to, before concluding, mention some other considerations. I think in addition to adjusting school schedules, there, you know, are certainly other elements of promoting sleep hygiene that we should move forward and promote. That includes educating our students and our families and our staff as well, of course, around the benefits of adequate sleep and, and really trying to push on the importance of it and hopefully help people prioritize that to a large degree. You know, there's certainly the question of electronics, although the research around the biology of sleep came long before kids had individual devices. You know, there's no question that there is some literature out there talking about the, the challenges when kids have devices or a phone that is stimulating them and keeping them up later than perhaps they otherwise would be if they didn't have it. So how can we have families and students make good decisions about that? How do we promote good time management student, skills for students so that, you know, the human aspect of procrastination is something that we help them with to the greatest extent we can? And so they're not staying up later than they need to to get things done that they need to get done. And we need to continue to have a dialogue regarding what the healthy expectations are for what we ask of our students, both as a school district and as families. And what they ask of themselves sometimes, because sometimes students themselves, they have a lot of things that they want to do and they want to commit themselves to. So what is a healthy approach in terms of the combination of all the elements, whether that's homework, co-curricular activities, other outside activities, family responsibilities, work? That's something that, you know, is important for us as a community to continue to think about how we can help promote a healthy balance for our students. We also will absolutely need to, if we adopt this new schedule, monitor what its effects are. We need to be collecting and analyzing data, whether that's how much students are sleeping, attendance and tardiness, is, how does it impact that at each level? How can we look at, you know, certainly, there are a variety of things we're doing to try to promote better mental health among students. It'll be really hard to isolate this one variable, but in a general sense, you know, are we seeing changes in students' reported mental health and wellbeing measures? What are we seeing for overall academic performance? There have been studies like that done, and I think that we need to look at, how is our data, whether that's on things like the Regional Health Survey, or whether that's on issues related to, you know, Panorama or whatever it might be? How is that comparing to other norms, other, other comparison districts, both here within Massachusetts and nationally? And I think it would be terrific if we're able to find a partner or partners to do some actual research with us. Obviously, New Mass Medical School would be a place that we would approach, being so close by. But it would be interesting to see if we can find some ways to do some studying that how this kind of schedule change does actually impact beyond self-reporting and, you know, are there other ways to do observations of how much sleep our students are getting and how that might be changing? So with that, let me conclude by saying, you know, there's a clear understanding that I certainly have in my role, and I believe the Sleep Health Committee does as well, that we are never going to have any kind of unanimity or even close to it when it comes to what, what a school schedule should be. I, I think that through the process, there has been a great deal of respect for those whose opinions are different than what has ultimately been recommended. I think there are certainly, and as there should be also for those who do concur with what the recommendation is. It was a very thorough process. I thought it was well-informed by data and by research. I think it, it was really providing multiple opportunities for people to give feedback. That feedback was acted upon in a variety of ways. And even when, you know, the feedback that was not acted upon, it was heard. I think people were listened to, and obviously, when people have different perspectives, you know, some, not everyone's going to agree, and that's okay. But I am confident that this is a thoughtful recommendation, given the, the quality of the work and the, the thinking that went into this consensus recommendation, not unanimous from the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, but strong consensus. I also, as superintendent, concur and recommend to you this evening to vote to change the start and end times next year to align with the modified Option A recommendation that's been made by the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and, you know, from the school committee, and look forward to hearing what your perspective is. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Dr. Sawyer. It certainly has been a very thorough process. And now is the time for us as a committee to discuss sort of our, our thoughts and feelings on this matter before deciding whether to take it up for a vote. And I would open it up to any of my colleagues who might like to begin with any of your thoughts as you've observed the process over many, many meetings.
I'll start.
Please.
Sure. I think, you know, it bears repeating some of these facts. As we talked about, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended middle and high school start time should be eight thirty or later. So we're looking at medical-driven data. And the proposed shift, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, it clearly aligns with our strategic priority of well, enhanced wellbeing of all. And we don't make our decisions in a vacuum as a committee. Our, our process has always been to be very thorough and to make sure that we're looking at all data, and this is a very data-driven process. And, but we're also listen to all stakeholders, and we want to make sure that they had a voice in this and had an opinion. And again, if the recommendation is not what they wanted, it isn't what, it wasn't, we heard what they said. It wasn't that we weren't listening. Everything was taken into consideration in all my years on this committee. I think that is one of the hallmarks of how we make our decisions. We don't make them in a vacuum. The other parts for me that stood out is it's, in a perfect world, we would just be able to go with what medical science tells us to do. There'd be no financial ramifications, no concerns for staff, family and students. But that's not what we can do. So we're looking at the premise of how can we make our students better in, you know, mental health issues, academic, all of the other, you know, data points that we've talked about for quite a while. So at this point, I, I know it's not, any decision we make is not going to be ideal for, for families, staff, students. There's not one universal answer that will fit everybody's personal issues or how their family works. And I fully understand the stress of that. When you change a schedule as a working parent or whatever your situation may be, it is difficult. And as a parent, we lived that through this district many times, and it was difficult for my own family. But I always felt that the best decision was made by the school committee at the time, the superintendent, so it was done well. I wish that we had the ability to make the sweeping change and had that Option B, which was there, but we don't have that ability. I think there were ripple effects that came out of the study that affect families and staff and students, as well as financial ramifications for the district. And we, as we start our FY twenty-five budget, we need to really start thinking about, what are we doing for our district moving forward? And this is budget neutral as notion. So with all that being said, I do support the proposed start time that Dr. Sawyer has recommended. This change will at least start moving the needle forward in some manner. I, I do highly recommend that we continue to assess, review it, make sure that we're doing the right things for students and staff and all the families. I also think as we move forward, we dovetail with our homework policy and make sure that that is not an impediment to student's sleep. And I know that's something that we're looking at as a committee moving forward as well. And finally, I just want to thank all the members, especially Ms. Hefner and Ms. Boucher, and all the parents, staff and students. This was a lot of work in a really short amount of time during the holidays as well. So thank you. I think this was probably one of the best data-driven issues that we've looked at. And I think the decision, again, will not fit everybody, but we're moving the needle. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paj.
Great, thank you. So this is now the, the seventh time we've been talking about school start times across general meetings. And I want to thank the subcommittee first and foremost. It was a very thorough presentation, a lot of analysis, a lot of feedback. I actually found it most helpful when we looked at those communities that had adopted these changes or they reverted back from the change and also just rejected them altogether. It was very helpful to understand how those changes were just kind of thought through. I think what I learned through this process is change is hard, right? I've been a parent in the district since two thousand and five, about eighteen years. So you, you go through the different changes at every grade level, right? And there are adjustments similar to what Dr. Sawyer just mentioned, going from, you know, you know, elementary to middle to high school. Now, in my seventh year with high school, start times at seven thirty-five, bus arrival at six forty. There's, that's a dramatic change, you know? So, so I've, I've kind of, you know, seen it from, from all the different levels. I definitely appreciate the, the feedback that we got from the community as well. That was also helpful, kind of factored into my thoughts on this. Also, I mean, I think logistics, transportation and the financial guardrails around what we're able to do, I think also need to be factored in. We know, you know, we can't just kind of do this specifically to the high school because we know that's going to cost, you know, more money per bus. We don't have that money in our appropriated budget to, to use that. And, you know, just looking at the various changes to the grade levels and the options that were proposed, obviously, we saw the elementary shift about fifteen minutes, you know, start and end times. I thought it was really good to consider through the end time of three forty and moving that back ten minutes. I thought that, you know, responded to some of the concerns raised by elementary. You know, I, I've gone back and forth on the different options, and it just was based on the, the thorough presentation at every meeting and the workshops that we had. You know, there was a, a point in time, you know, where I was really kind of fixated on, on Option B because I see the most impact to the high schoolers. I see a little less impact to, say, the middle school with a five-minute shift earlier. But when we made that change to, you know, look at the needs of the elementary students, there were some logistical needs that were presented about Option B. In addition to that one-hour shift for high schoolers and what that means to after-school activities, had to factor that one in as well. So that kind of brought me back into Option A. You know, and when I looked at Option A, you know, I think it's easy to just take a, you know, look at it and say, well, it's only twenty minutes. But the bigger picture is the modified kind of alignment around the bus schedules and what you stand to gain when you aren't waiting for the bus at six nineteen AM for a seven thirty-five start time, you know? So I think that, that also needs to be factored into it. It's not just twenty minutes. It's thirty-five, you know, roughly on average. So I think, you know, in summary, I think our primary focus is the success, wellbeing and health of the students of this district, right? And, you know, I said it last week, you know, there's not a one-size-fits-all option when it comes to schedule. It just isn't. There, there's a range of perspectives on this received through the emails, through survey comments. It's very situational, right? It depends on where you sit within the district and, you know, where your kids are within each of the grade levels. So I, I do support Option A, the recommendation that was made by the subcommittee and by Dr. Sawyer. I see this as, as moving the needle forward. And I do wish that it was a little more, but understandably, we have, you know, like I said, the financial guardrails and, you know, the need for maintaining those three tiers of bus schedules to make this work. There's less impact on, on the high school activities after school, but also you can't ignore the sleep health of the middle schoolers as well. There's two-thirds of the students at Oak that are teenagers and that, you know, could develop better sleep hygiene as a result. So, you know, and I also don't view this as an irreversible decision, right? We saw that from the other communities that had tried it and reverted back, right? And I do think it's, it's critical that we, we monitor the success and continue to take the pulse of the school community if this is the direction that we go, you know, across students, staff, parents and caretakers. So we do need to move the needle. I believe this moves the needle in the right direction, and I do support Option A.
Thank you, Mr. Wunske. Sure, go ahead, Mr. Paj.
I want to start by thanking the members of the community who took the time to offer feedback to us, whether it was through participation in the survey, participating in the committee, but also those who took the time to email and write us as school committee members. I want to thank everyone who took the time to express their views. I personally read every piece of feedback we received. I know that my colleagues did as well. That is something we take very seriously, and we do appreciate the community engaging, regardless of what their opinion may be, you know, to hear those different perspectives. It helps inform us as we make our decisions. This was always going to be a difficult decision because this is one of those types of decisions that invariably displeases a segment of the community. This is scheduling. And for anyone who has ever used a doodle pole to schedule a group of five, six, seven or eight people, or who has ever tried to arrange the schedules of even a, a group of people less than ten, you know, you typically do not find scheduling that is convenient for a group even that size. We have over six thousand families in Shrewsbury Public Schools. There is no decision that this body is going to make tonight that will please every one of those. There is no decision that we make tonight that is going to have less than twenty-five percent minimum of those families angry or disappointed. So this is one of those decisions that, you know, you can't help but disappoint people. And so we come to what is the sound policy choice to make. Unfortunately, as the superintendent alluded to, Shrewsbury's busing situation and our geography makes the logistical situation in Shrewsbury rather unique, where we don't have the opportunity to ferry students to and from schools simultaneously at different grade levels. We do have to go divide high school, middle school and elementary school. We do have a high school in one corner of our community, which obviously contributes to bus times. So we have logistical considerations that are, in our ways, we try to solve this issue that other communities do not have. As I have carefully read all of the materials and feedback presented to us, I find myself arriving in a similar place as the superintendent's recommendation, and I do intend to support Option A as proposed tonight. Compromise is sometimes necessary in making policy choices. I, in particular, appreciate the feedback we received from elementary parents about concern about how late their students would arrive home, especially in times of the year where the sun is going down sooner rather than later. And I do want to applaud the concession that was make, made, that there was an adjustment to the elementary school end time in the proposal before us tonight. Try, try to shave some time off the elementary day to, to move those kids home a little bit earlier. That, I do think, was an important concession to make. To not go forward with Option A makes no concession to the other end of this equation, which is that our high school students are starting way too early. So for those reasons, I do intend to support the recommendation as it is before us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Paj. Yes, Ms. Boucher, please.
I'd like to start off by thanking the members of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee for all of their hard work and coming to their recommendation on this issue. It was a pleasure to work with them, to learn about, more about this important issue and to hear all the members' different perspectives. I was part of the subgroup that studied other districts and what they had done with regard to start times. And as part of this work, we reviewed a lot of other districts' websites concerning their reports and presentations on this issue. And the reports and presentations that our Sleep Health Advisory Committee have put together for our district will be a tremendous resource for other districts now that are studying this issue. They were all extremely thoughtful and well-done, and I really appreciate all of the volunteer hours that went into this effort. I would also like to acknowledge Dr. Sawyer's facilitation of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. He set the tone for this very productive group, and he did an excellent job leading and coordinating the effort. After much consideration of the feedback from all stakeholders, reviewing the reports of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, and considering Dr. Sawyer's recommendation, I also support the Sleep Health Advisory Committee's recommendation to adopt modified Option A. I believe that this option provides additional sleep opportunity to high school and middle school students while allowing the opportunity for participation in co-curricular activities, jobs, extra help and sibling care for high school students with the two twenty dismissal time. This modified Option A also takes into account the concerns expressed by elementary educators and parents after, at the elementary level. Although the start time is only being adjusted by twenty minutes, the sleep opportunity for students will actually be much greater due to the adjustment to the tiers made at all the different levels, starting forty minutes apart. Although I, you know, we do acknowledge that the research points to eight thirty as the more optimal start time, the information from sleep experts does indicate that incremental changes make a positive difference. And I understand that change to schedules is very difficult. I have two students in the district, and my husband and I both work full-time. I appreciate the challenges of having children in different schools that start and end at different times and reshuffling of family schedules each year as students move through different schools in the district. Although modified Option A is not a perfect solution, I believe that, given the strong benefits to students' wellbeing that additional sleep provides, that the adoption of modified Option A is the right course of action for Shrewsbury Public Schools at this time. I also support continuing the conversation around sleep hygiene that studying this issue has highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think for, for myself, I have been supportive of a move to increase sleep time for adolescents since before I was on this committee and joined as a parent in your last iteration, Dr. Sawyer, about locate, locate this issue when we, at that time, as a community, weren't, weren't able and weren't ready to kind of, to make this change. Like everyone has said, I am very appreciative of the many community members, from those on the, on the advisory committee to all of those who've responded to our many forms of public engagement to, to share their feedback. engagement, to share their feedback because it's important to hear about something that's, as we said, doodle poles are hard. This is hard, but very important. And clearly, for some, very much strikes home to what does their, what does their day look like? You know, beginning and end of your day are important times. Like some here, I have, I have the pleasure of having an elementary, middle, and high schooler right now, and I can tell you the dinner table conversations have been rough over the last few months as they have lobbied and have different opinions. And I've, I also appreciate, though, that not all children are the same, not all families are the same, not all their needs are the same, nor their values are the same about what is, what is most important. So fundamentally, I come to the, I come to the issue supportive of later start times due to the biology of children's sleep patterns, particularly after puberty. That research has been, has been clear. It has been growing. It is not as simple as taking away the devices and sending kids to bed. I know that both from my own personal experience and the youth close to me, that some of them just cannot fall asleep. And that's, that they're not there, even when their parents are ready for them to do the same. But we know the data tells us that the mental health impacts, the motor vehicle safety impacts, the sports safety impacts, the feelings of depression, their ability to learn and store information, all of these things are increased by more sleep. And I do agree with what has been said many times tonight, that we need to do a better job talking about the importance of sleep as a community, both within the schools and more broadly, and that I have learned when I talk about sleep, just as the same as when we talk about, you know, the importance of diet and the importance of exercise, that these things resonate for young people, and they start to, they start to hold on to them and understand what's, what's important. So I fundamentally believe that changing our start times for adolescents is important and what we should do. Given that, I started off being very supportive of option B, saying that's where we should go, and 8:30, 8:30, 8:30, particularly for the high school for those reasons, and that the sleep science alone should be the guide. But as has been mentioned tonight a few times, we also live in the real world, and there are many other things to think about. We know particularly as students get older, as cohorts of students, they're more engaged in activities not only after school but well into the evening hours as they get older. I have someone in an activity that lasts till nine o'clock at night every week. So we also know that there are protective factors for youth to be engaged in those activities, both on the mental health and overall positive youth development of having more adults in their lives is important. And so that's an important thing for us to balance. As a committee, we've tried to support that by removing the activity fee and adding later buses. And so we've been trying to encourage that and certainly can appreciate some of the feedback that we not do any, do a disservice to that endeavor at the same time. You know, receiving the emails that we have, many of whom focused on the elementary time, I wanted to spend a minute thinking of my, my thoughts about that. We recognize, and the advisory committee certainly in their report, also recognize the implications for families, both the cost of more childcare and moving elementary being even more disruptive to more families and potentially not worth those trade-offs. Obviously, we have heard as a committee that for some, that's not, that's not their personal perspective on this. I do think we need to continue to look at this issue. I think we need to spend time to evaluate it and see how it's going, but, but it's not a one-and-done, and we're never going to talk about this again as a, as a community. I want to also note a really important piece for us is we're beginning to really move into budget cycle, that putting more money into this is an option and is a choice that we clearly made as a community that that was not, that was not the right choice. We currently run 45 buses at a cost of millions of dollars to the district. This is not as simple as adding one bus, and every one additional bus is around $80,000. That's, that's an educator and more. And so that, for some of the emails that we received and the feedback we received, kind of wanted both ends, and we're stuck in the business that we can't do both. We can't both move elementarily earlier or, you know, and, and also have high school later, right? There was just, we kind of couldn't give it both, both ends there. So I appreciate the modification, particularly for elementary to the 3:30 at the end of the day, and hope that that helps alleviate some of the concerns. And for those particularly working families who have suggested that this presents new challenges for them, Dr. Sawyer, I appreciate the consideration for thinking about an early program at Sherwood, at that middle school level, fifth grade can feel early for many families to, to have their kids be home alone. But I also know that we have wonderful before-school programming that pre-COVID and pre-the opening of Beal all had long wait lists and were hard for families to get into. We have, we're in a different situation now, and I hope that some families may find that to be, working families to be a benefit to them at hopefully a reasonable cost. I, I also know that in our district, fixing the buses has been said is such a critically important piece of all of this, the, the emails and feedback that suggests, oh, it's just 20 minutes. Dr. Mr. Wunske and I don't live too far apart from each other, and my child gets to the high school a full 40 minutes before school begins, and it is both certainly dark and early. And, and fixing that start time is, or fixing those, those tiers really will allow many more children, I hope, to be able to get, get additional sleep. Finally, as a committee, I think we have, and certainly for me personally, recognized that student mental health and well-being is important, and that we have made a, a bunch of moves in that context. And I, so this is just one of a bunch of other things. And sometimes if you just tune into this, you think, maybe that's, this is all they're trying to do. And so I want to note a few of those for those who are tuning in. That last fiscal year, we made significant investments around mental health in terms of personnel at the district level. The both introduction and then expansion of the advisory program to make sure that young people have access to adults within their school day has been an important investment and one for us to continue to pay attention to and to think about making sure young people know who to reach out to. We already mentioned, we've put in more activities, and we've tried to reduce the barriers for kids to engage in those that are in the after-school hours. Sleep is another piece of this, certainly that we're trying to figure out how to balance. It's important to me that folks know that we have on our plate for this, this, this school year to look at that homework policy that has a date of almost 20 years ago because it's a difficult topic to challenge, to, to address. So I look forward to our next big challenging one. But to think about how do we balance the academic needs, and that some, some feedback is the kids have too much work, so you can't possibly have them get out later. So I think we, we're, our job is to kind of think about all those competing time pressures. And as I said, continuing to focus on how do we use our ability as educators fundamentally, to educate both the community, but more importantly, our students about this importance of sleep. So I certainly, Dr. Sawyer, commend your efforts to shepherd this process. And I'm, and I'm ultimately persuaded that, that our modified option A is a very, very good move forward, even if I know, as you've said, we're not going to make everybody happy here this evening. I hope people feel that our process has been open and thorough and transparent. Any other, anyone have any feedback to others' comments? If not, I'm wondering if folks are feeling like we're in a position to make a vote. And if, so Dr. Sawyer, anything you might want to add or add on here before we, before I open up or take a?
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you, and I appreciate all the thoughtful comments from the committee members. The slide I put up here, I've made a correction to because it, the number, for a reason, wasn't, all of a sudden didn't square with me. The percentage of kids who are getting at least eight hours of sleep last reported by Shrewsbury High Schools is actually 20%. 15% was who said eight, and then there's a few who said nine or 10. So the total getting at least eight hours of sleep is 20%. I wanted to make sure I corrected the record while I could. And then, you know, in terms of, you know, a couple of other pieces, some of the feedback, I want to be clear with feedback from some educators, wondering about, you know, how students being later in the day, particularly at the elementary level, might impact, you know, how they are faring in terms of their own learning or their own ability to attend. And, you know, I've done some, looking into some of the research, I have not been able to find anything really specifically concrete about, you know, a 15-minute change from a 3:00 to 3:15 end time being something that would be, have a really significant impact. That said, I have a lot of respect for our educators' perspectives. And that's one thing that we'll have to seriously look at is, okay, what does that sort of rhythm of the school day look like? How do we make sure that we're trying to assist? You know, there's some, there's some conflicting research out there. There's some around start times that said when some districts had flipped elementary earlier, there were actually more discipline problems when kids went to school earlier than they were when they went later at that age. And, you know, whether that's a study that would be replicated or not, these are the hard things when there, you know, some districts around that have been studied but not on a larger scale. But as we look at the impact, we need to consider that for sure. Again, you know, we know that we've done it before at Beal. That doesn't mean that there aren't challenges of having kids there a bit later in the afternoon, and that's something I think is important to note. And then as far as, you know, staffing, I know that there's a question from middle school staff about their own schedules in terms of what's, what's within our contract relative to, you know, when staff are required to report and be on campus and when they would be, and whether there could be adjustments to that within what's in the contract language already. And that is something, if the committee supports this, that I'll be reaching out to our Teachers Association to see if there might be something there that would be desirable from teachers' perspectives, because obviously that's part of the feedback that came as well. I meant to acknowledge that earlier, and I had neglected to. So, but with that, I, again, my recommendation for all the reasons that you stated is that we move forward with this. I do think it's a positive move forward and something that we should monitor closely and, and work on in conjunction with all those other things that we can do around sleep hygiene as well as for mental health, because that combination is important. You know, 50% of our kids are reporting they're getting six or fewer hours of sleep a night. That's very concerning. We should be able to move the needle on that with this, with this move. And that's something that I look forward to hopefully seeing that, you know, we're doing better in that aspect in the next couple of years after implementation. So again, thank you for all your thoughtful consideration.
At this point, I wonder, colleagues, if I may have a motion that the committee vote to change the start and end times of the Student Academic Day as presented in the modified option A as recommended by the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Dr. Sawyer, we look forward to hearing some updates around implementation as you move this one forward. That being said, I'm going to move forward to our next item on the agenda, which is our Shrewsbury High School Program of Studies of Vote. The school committee heard a presentation of the proposed changes to the program of studies, or the, at the, at the high school level, excuse me, at our January 18, 2023 meeting. At that time, a memorandum from Mr. Brazil outlining the proposed changes was provided along with a presentation, and we'd have received that previously under separate cover. I will note for the record that we have not received any, any feedback on, on some of the changes, which, as discussed, were relatively modest and overwhelmingly, but, but important nonetheless, changes. Dr. Sawyer, do you have anything else to add to this matter?
I've not received any feedback either from parents on this particular piece. I think there are reasonable recommendations in terms of any changes, and we're pleased with the quality of the program of studies, and I would recommend the school committee vote to approve it this evening.
If there's no further comment, then I would ask for a motion from the, from the committee to vote to approve the Shrewsbury High School 2023-2024 Program of Studies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor can do so with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. That program of studies is good for the high school to move forward. They're a very complicated process of enrolling students. My colleagues, we do have an, an item that we're going to move to our next agenda item, the Class of 2022 Seal of Bili literacy report. While we did receive that, and that is prepared to go, we have decided to take that up at our next meeting on February 15. So with that, we do have, connected to it, however, to that topic was, under Finance and Operations, a, a vote to accept a grant on outcomes in languages other than English. Our Seal of Bili literacy program requires approximately $10,000 in annual funding for the World Languages Department predominantly, or excuse me, primarily to administer the required standardized tests in various languages to determine whether students qualify for this honor. Mr. Kenneth Almeida, our Director of World Languages, was successful in procuring a competitive grant through the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to cover the cost of the testing for the Seal of Bili literacy. However, given that that is over our, our policy limits in terms of acceptance, that has to come to us for a vote. Dr. Sawyer, is there anything you'd like to add to this? I should say the, the grant amount is for $9,460 to be used for the purposes of those tests. Is there anything more for, for this? And I will discuss it more in our next meeting.
Sure. Yeah, so it's a little preview to when Mr. Almeida does come, but I really appreciate his leadership in moving this program forward. It is really an honor for students to be able to gain this achievement. It's something that's been relatively new in the Commonwealth over the last few years. And this was, last year was the first year that we implemented it in Shrewsbury. And so students can put on their college application or resume that they've earned the Seal of Bili literacy, which can mean either you're a student who, you know, your primary language is English, and you take a world language through our public school district, and then at the conclusion, when you're, you know, upper level at high school, you're able to take a test to show a level of proficiency in that language, whether that be Spanish, or Latin, French, or Mandarin, and you earn the Seal of Bili literacy, which I think is certainly attractive on a college application or, and so forth. The other way you can earn it is if your native language is something other than English, and you are, because you have to demonstrate proficiency in English as well, which is done through the MCAS test in English Language Arts. And so if you are a student who's learned English while you were here, and you're able to demonstrate through one of these tests that you're also proficient in your, another language, whether that's Portuguese, or Tamil, or whatever language you happen to be speaking at home, and you do well enough on the MCAS as well, you also get that Seal of Bili literacy. If you are essentially, you are, you qualify as bilingual. And that's something that I think is, was well-received, and a lot of students qualify. You'll hear some great results when Mr. Almeida presents. And I really appreciate he took the initiative to go after this grant, which really offsets almost entire cost, because it's really the testing that you have to provide to kids that adds up to, to those dollars. So with that, I would just ask that you approve the grant funding so that we can move forward with utilizing it.
Yeah, please.
I think it's important just to repeat, to thank Mr. Almeida. We can thank him when he's here in person, but this is a significant grant amount for us to receive. It's going to help this program, and he also took that extra time out of his busy day as the director to do this. So I think that's a, it's a plus-plus, and huge thank you to him.
Yeah. I think we have a lot of accolades to share with him when he's here with us in a few, in a few weeks. But certainly agree with you, Ms. Rutz. With that, I would ask for a motion for the committee to accept the fiscal year 2023 proficiency-based outcomes in languages other than English grant in the amount of $9,460 to be used for its intended purposes.
So moved.
Second.
And thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. That passes unanimously. Our next item under, also under Finance and Operations, is the enrollment projections for the 2023-2024 school year. I understand, Mr. Collins, you are here to share some enrollment projections from the district's students' population for the future years, and that report includes information both on the historical and projected enrollment from the New England School Development Council and the Shrewsbury Town Manager's Office. So thank you very much, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Effernan. And just to start off, of course, in kind of stating what I think is the obvious, but I still think important is, you know, the rationale and the importance of enrollment projections themselves, in that we use these in two primary ways. One would be, as you mentioned, in terms of preparation for next year's budget. It's one of the underpinnings of developing next year's budget is how many students are we serving. And so, you know, having a good idea of that number of students by grade level helps us to develop that specific budget plan that Dr. Sawyer will recommend to you at your next meeting on February 15. In the longer term, the long-term enrollment projections, of course, help with space planning and trends. And, you know, you know that this year that we have engaged consultant LPAA to conduct a pre-K through 12 space study, which is still ongoing, and that will help us determine our capital school space needs into the future. So that's really the rationale for maintaining enrollment projections and looking forward to both the short and the long-term impacts of those. So what are the methods? There's, there's two primary methods that we're using for the short-term, one-year, one-to-five-year outlook, and that is, they're both traditional kind of cohort survival methods, which basically means, you know, you're looking at a grade of students or cohort, and what is the trend when that cohort, say, from kindergarten progresses to grade one and then to grade two? What happens to the size of that population along that continuum? And the town manager, so-called town manager projection, this is a kind of historical piece here, is that they've always been done for the past couple of decades out of the town manager's office so that they are an independent source of information. And- information and providing that to the school department for our use. And the second method or source is the New England School Development Council, and they have a true, other, another cohort survival method, but they use a shorter look-back period of three years instead of a five-year look-back. So, two different methods, slightly different results, as you would expect. So how do they work? Basically, as I explained, and you can kind of see on the, the screen here, that, and this is the town manager projection, that looking back for five years, there's these grade progressions of K one, you know, that kindergarten to grade one, and then one to grade two, what happened to that cohort on average over the last five years. And you'll see in the middle of the screen here, the average from the K kindergarten to grade one advancement was a sixteen percent increase in that cohort. And of course, parents have other, have had other choices for kindergarten, and it wasn't until most recently that all of our families had a full-day kindergarten opportunity at no tuition cost to them. So, you know, I guess the interesting thing to note here is if you look at those ratios, like twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, you know, we, we had a nineteen point four percent increase in enrollment from kindergarten to grade one. But now at twenty-one to twenty-two, it's down to eight point five percent, which effectively means we're getting more kids in kindergarten than we were, we were in the past because of the policy changes that have been made with respect to space availability and no tuition costs. So, those averages are kind of shown for each of those grade advancements. You know, the other one that I would just point out is, of course, the grade eight to grade nine, and you can see that, that that's a ninety-three point two percent ratio. So, again, if you had, if you theoretically had a hundred students in grade eight right now, and you wanted to predict what next year's grade nine would be, you would take ninety-three point two percent and say you're going to have ninety-three kids on, on average. And you can see those ratios, again, back in twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, we only had about eighty-nine percent of our eighth-grade students progressing on to grade nine at the high school. And because of policy changes with the Asbit Valley Vocational High School, you can see, flash forward to twenty-one, twenty-two, you know, we're almost ninety-eight percent now, ninety-seven point six percent. So, a higher percentage of our kids are progressing from our grade eight to grade nine. We're retaining more of them because fewer of them are going to Asbit Valley Regional High School, and of course, those other opportunities like private schools throughout the, you know, Oyster County. And then, you know, you can see that this progression on the lower half of the screen, you know, what, for example, back in twenty nineteen, the kindergarten cohort was three hundred and sixty-two students, and then when they advanced to grade one, that cohort was four hundred and seven. It continued to grow in grade two to four seventeen. It grew again in grade three to four twenty-five, so on and so forth, all, all and down the line. And, and when they graduate, it's predicted that that cohort will be at four hundred and nine students. And again, that's based upon the ratios applied above from the most recent five-year trend. So that's how these, they're strict quantitative methods. That's it. Numbers only. It's not look at, you know, proposed housing projects. Doesn't look at anything other than this past quantitative results. NESDEC does the same thing. I won't bore you with that. They just use, they do use a three-year look-back instead of a five-year look-back. And so the question is, what do those results produce? And so in the aggregate, this is kind of a comparison of the, the one- and five-year outlook between the two different models. In the, the blue line is the Town Manager's Office projection, and the red line is the NESDEC projection. So, you can see that for next year, the town manager projection, because they're so close, I just got a grade advances for a second here. Yeah, so the, next year, the town manager projection is five thousand six hundred and forty-nine, and NESDEC is five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight for kindergarten through grade twelve. Does not include preschool. And then five years out, you can see the numbers there, fifty-four to ninety-one, fifty-four ninety-one and fifty-three ninety-one, downward trend slightly for the five-year outlook. And in terms of the one-year outlook, you can see it's pretty close, but some fewer students. That's the town manager projection. And this is how it breaks out by grade cohort, if you will. So, the second bar here, twenty-two to twenty-three actuals, in that blue segment of that bar chart, is one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. That's our K through four population. If you look ahead to next year, twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see that the prediction is, is that K through four cohort will go down by five students to nineteen seventy. You can see that Sherwood's population is proj, creates five and six, projected to go down to just under nine hundred, drop of forty-nine students, whereas Oak is predicted to go up from nine forty-four to nine seventy-five. Different cohorts of students by grade level. And then the high school, town manager projection has eighteen oh five. You know, we think that's on the low side, again, because the model hasn't really caught up, if you will, with the, the change in the, the fewer students going to Asbit. So, that's the town manager projection. And then the NESDEC is kind of the similar thing, just broken out by these various grade segments, if you will. So how does that compare? How do these two models compare to the current year? And this is in the, the green column is our current kindergarten through grade twelve, five thousand six hundred and eighty-eight students. Town manager projection has us going down by thirty-nine students. NESDEC has us going down by fifty in the aggregate. And you can see the differences grade by grade, what the prediction is there. And so, that helps inform us in terms of staff planning, you know, no, no real big surprises here, no big increases, no big drop-offs by grade level. There have been some questions before about, previously, because primarily of COVID, about our homeschool enrollment pattern. And so this is the five-year trend here, and we're presenting this for folks to see. You can see the big spike in the fall of twenty twenty. COVID broke out in the spring of twenty twenty, and you can see that as a result of that, you know, we had more than a doubling of families deciding to, or students and families decide to homeschool their children. It continued, although it was fewer, in the following year. And, you know, we're thirty-one as of this past October first. And October first is the, the marker, the measuring point that you use from one year to the next. Our enrollment, of course, changes almost every day, right? There's kids moving in, there's kids moving out. And so to make, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons, it's October first, and that's the data that school districts use. We use to compare one year to the next. Department of Education uses it as well. Okay, so how does this model work? Or how, what were the results for last year? And so, I believe I sat here and gave a similar report to you about what enrollment would look like for this fall. And we had a, a projection, and the town manager projection was for fifty-six sixteen kindergarten through grade twelve, and NESDEC projected slightly more, fifty-six forty-six. And we actually ended up on October first higher than both of those at fifty-six eighty-eight. And you can see, I shaded in orange kind of the most, the more significant differences by cohort. And, you know, we ended up with three hundred and fifty-eight students in kindergarten on October first, which significantly surpassed both models. That was a surprise to us. Whereas kindergarten was, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty students fewer, which was a surprise as well. Typically, you don't see, we haven't seen in the recent enrollment trends kindergarten going down from the, the models that project this. And then in grade nine, you can see, no surprise there. The, the models predicted four hundred and fifty-eight or four hundred and sixty-four. What do you know? We got four hundred and eighty-six. Again, fewer acceptances to Asbit. So, in the aggregate, you know, the, the variance was between the three-quarters of a percent and, and one and a quarter percent. So, you know, in the aggregate, there, there are highly, there's a high correlation between the, the model and the, and the outcome, you know, on a percentage basis. And we simply had, you know, more students than were, were predicted by both models in this particular year, this past October. So how do they, how has this model worked? Are these models worked on a five-year basis? Interestingly, and we've got COVID, of course, happened here, so we look back at twenty seventeen. And when these models were developed back in the twenty seventeen year, it said, for twenty twenty-three, you will have X amount of students, both NESDEC and Town Manager. And then we have this reality, which is the far right here, and we ended up with K through twelve, five thousand six hundred and eighty-eight students this past October first. Both models had us fifty-nine, fifty-nine hundred to six thousand. So we have fewer students, between two and three hundred fewer than were predicted by both models. So the variance there is more significant, between four and five and a half percent less. And certainly, you know, we're, we're all still trying to figure out how much of this is due to COVID, how much of this due to kind of just overall trends in families and socioeconomics and, and things like that. But that's how that model did five years ago. Also, a question that people might be asking is, a lot of buzz about Market Basket. I haven't been yet, but forward to going, and certainly have been in that development to work with our transportation coordinator, April Yu, and our bus company, AA Transportation, to develop a bus, you know, suitable bus stop location for students who are residing in the apartment complexes that surround the grocery store. And so right now, our understanding is, is that, you know, all the units are fully built, and they're at a very high level of occupancy, and that has gleaned on a pre-K through twelve basis, nineteen students. And you can see there's, you know, one or two or three at the most per grade level. So we have nineteen in total. I, I did have a chance just to look back at a report that was required to be done in, in all these types of projects by the developer to predict how many students, what the impact would be on all the departments, what's the impact on the school departments, what's the impact on the police department, how many calls are you going to get, emergency calls, how many students will you get? Well, that consultant that did that economic report for the developer predicted that there would be between nineteen and thirty-four students. They had to pick, you know, some number to develop kind of a financial, so they picked twenty-eight. So, right now, we're at nineteen, we're at the, you know, low end of that prediction. So, it seems like they did a pretty good job of predicting that. And just as a comparison point, you know, where are we with Lakeway Commons? We're at twenty-nine students, and it's, it's been pretty constant in terms of that range since that development. It hasn't spiked up or, you know, done crazy gyrations. It's been pretty static. And so, you know, just, just those two combined, you know, those, the, both of those developments are in the Beal School Zone right now. So, just in total, we have two kids at Parker Road from those, just those two complexes, eighteen at Beal, seven at Sherwood, seven at Oak, fourteen at the high school. And again, this, these are not all of our apartment, apartment complexes. I, I know everybody knows that in the, in the community, but Market Basket is just the, in Lakeway, they're just most, two most recent. So, that's why we're, we're showing those. And so, kind of just in summary, what does all this mean? So the models are telling us that we'll see a small decrease. The high school, we think, you know, despite the models, what they're saying, that we're probably going to be just pretty, pretty level enrollment there at the high school, which is still three hundred and thirty-five students over design capacity. So we're at still stressed capacity there. Even though, you know, enrollment has leveled off, it's still way higher than it was designed for. And I know that previously in, in some of the reports the high school has given, they're, they're talking about room utilization, which is an important factor in terms of the program offerings that, that can be included. And we don't have space, you can't expand your program of studies. And we're at ninety-nine percent room utilization there. So just kind of a final closing note is that, you know, a little foreshadowing with respect to Fiscal Twenty-four, the enrollment projections are not driving us to be adding teaching staff for enrollment-related purposes. So you won't be seeing that coming forward. And, you know, the, the projection models we have, and those are, again, based upon October one numbers versus October one numbers. And we will still also look, you know, as we progress in the budget process, you know, well, where are we right now, today? And are there big variances from whence we started the year, and in comparison to what the models are saying for October one, just so that we're kind of eyes wide open as we go through the budget process? So, that's the projection report that I have for you tonight, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Any questions, colleagues? No, I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Collins, for all the work that goes, that goes into this. Certainly important that we keep our eye on those years with higher variability than others than the, the K. And, and notable, this doesn't include pre-K, which is an important piece of our, of our, of our community, but not, not part of this, for reasons I understand. But, but that, that K and one, and particularly that transitioning into, into ninth, and we are well aware of the challenges of Asbet here, and what, what that means. And obviously, that, while that means more kids here, that doesn't mean that they're not looking for other opportunities that we're not able to provide. So, but important to know and, and plan for them. So, an important piece to, to help us in the budget development. Dr. Sawyer, is there anything you'd like to add, add to this matter?
I, I do. I'm curious to see what the next couple of years bring in terms of kindergarten, pre-one enrollment. I mean, some of that change year-over-year seems to have been, and we talked about this before, having that red-shirting phenomenon to some degree, where people held their kid out of preschool or out of kindergarten during COVID, you know, to wait another year. If that's going to smooth out more, and to see what those sort of incoming cohorts, now that we've, after we've had full-day K for all available for, you know, multiple years, and see how that stabilizes or not. But, and I think it's, it's very interesting. I appreciate the information about the developments, because, you know, when you, if, if, I've taken to asking people, how many students you think are in those apartments? And the, the estimates are usually wildly larger than what they actually are. And so that's something that we have to continue to sort of communicate around relative to, to that, because I, people get concerned when they see big buildings going up and, you know, what that might mean. So, but again, the, the information's very helpful. It's really important for our planning purposes for the budget, and, you know, staffing plans and all those elements, and appreciate the work that Town Manager's Office and NESDEC and, and Mr. Collins does with all the statistics to help us be as thoughtful as we can with the prognostication. So, appreciate the report.
Can I ask you one question, Mr. Collins? I'm sorry, I should, it just occurred to me. Kindergarten enrollment opens when? And about when does it feel like it gels in this , because sort of from, obviously, students can enroll at any time if they move into the district, but in terms of your, I'm, I'm remembering last summer as there was flexibility, thinking maybe we're going to need another, another teacher, and, you know, because if we're going to need to add another class. When, when are you feeling like you're at a position of, this is, this is good to go, right? And particularly on that, on those early years?
Kindergarten students for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, in, in the past, we've done that a little bit later in the spring. Our, our goal is to make that earlier in the spring. This is actually an opportune time. This is actually an opportune time to say that our, we still have a lottery process for regular education students attending our preschool, and we will take lottery applicants up until Friday afternoon, January 26th. Friday's the 26th.
27th, I think.
27th, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Up till Friday afternoon, the 27th. So, we invite any parents who wish to have their child attend our preschool next year to complete that lottery process online at our student registration webpage. Once that process is completed, my goal is to have us open up enrollment for kindergarten soon thereafter. So, you know, whether that's the middle of March or the latter, excuse me, February or latter part of February, that would be the goal, so it would be sooner than prior years. So, that's kind of the target timeframe right now.
And about when in the planning process and the, in terms of as we approach the summer, some parents will rush to enroll right away, but, you know, when do you start to feel like you have a good handle on how many young, young people we may actually have in kindergarten?
On September 1st.
Not even August 30th, huh? Okay. It's that, it's that variable. That's important, it's important for the community, I understand.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a really good point, because as soon as we open up, the more communication, you know, this is especially true for parents who have not had children in the district before, and they just don't know timelines, they're not aware. And so, the sooner we open it up and start accepting those students and the word of mouth happens, then that will really help us. And as you said, we'll, once we open, open it up, you know, we'll get a spike of students, and then it'll kind of just trail off and trickle in, and there's, there's still, you know, considerations that, you know, parents are making around, you know, other types of kindergarten programs, private school kindergarten programs that fit their work schedule. So, you know, we're, we're working on two fronts. We're, we're working on the, using the projection, and typically, when we are projecting our class sizes, our cohort sizes, for budgetary purposes for next year, we will take both models and compare them and take the higher of the two, because that's a more conservative approach. So, if, if the models say kindergarten's going to be, you know, 330, and one of them says 350, we're going to plan on 350. And then, we're going to monitor that all through the summertime to see how those numbers compare and make sure that we're, you know, still operating within the school committee guidelines for class sizes. So, it isn't really until, you know, you really get close to the school opening that you have the firmest of numbers.
I think some of that phenomenon is that there are people who are certainly already here in the community, but there are people who make the decision to move to the community when their child's starting kindergarten.
Right.
And sometimes those home purchases or apartment, don't happen until the spring or the summertime. And then, you have people who are renting an apartment, and their lease doesn't start until September 1st. And one of the things that we're continuing to try to work on in terms of communications is, is working with the apartment complexes, try to make sure there's good information on what people are considering. Sometimes there's families who don't think they can register based on experience that they've had other places, like until the school year starts. And obviously, they may have been here since July 1st, and we want them to register earlier. So, continue to get the word out and, and as many ways as we can, because the sooner we get registrations, the better we can plan. It's, you know, some years are trickier than others in terms of how it fluctuates, but it is, it is, it is a tricky piece to manage.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice evening. Our next agenda item is approval of minutes. We did receive minutes for the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of January 18th, 2023, under a separate cover. But if folks have had a chance to review those, are there any edits or modifications for the record? Those can then be marked, approved as a submitted. And this evening, we do need to go into executive session, and so, for, we need to do that for the purposes of addressing Mass General Law 30A 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, or any federal grant and aid requirement, purpose seven, for the purposes of reviewing, approving, and or releasing executive session minutes, in addition, for the purpose of addressing Mass General Law 30A 21A3, known as purpose three, to discuss, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if, in an opening meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declares, relative to Shrewsbury Educational Association units A and/or B, Shrewsbury Professional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And finally, for the purpose of Mass General Law 30A 21A2, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, purpose two, where deliberation of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, we will return to open session only for the purposes of adjourned for the evening. If I may have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. A roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Strawinski?
Aye.
Mr. Pallage?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And thank you, and have a good evening.